Good morning. Today is January 4th, 2021. It's 9:00 AM. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Logan County Commissioners. I'd also like to welcome our new Commissioner, Cody Ellis.
Thank you.
Just elected to District 2.
Thank you.
Welcome Cody to the Board of Commissioners. With that, I'd like to go on to Item 2, the Flag Salute. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, welcome to the meeting. Move on to Item 3, any citizen desiring to be heard. Hearing none, we'll move on to Item 4. Consideration and possible action on selecting a Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Logan County. This being the first meeting of the new year. This is an annual event where we select a new Board Chairman and Vice Chairman, which will be next on the... So, I'll entertain any motions here.
I'll move that we appoint Martin as Chairman.
Okay. I'm not really wanting to argue that too much. I appreciate the nomination and the second. Without further ado, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. I appreciate the votes, fellas, and the confidence. Thank you very much. So, with that, I will move on to Item 5, as the new Chairman. Consideration and possible action on selecting a Vice Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Logan County. Again, I'll entertain any motions on the table here. Monty, would you like to be the Vice Chairman?
That's totally up to the Board.
I mean, if you'd like to do that, I mean, you're the most experienced Commissioner we've got on the Board. You've been here the longest and...
I mean, if that's your nomination, I'm good with that.
Well, I so moved then.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint... Monty is our Vice Chairman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Okay. If that passes, thank you very much. Item 6, consideration and possible action on approving minutes of December 31st, 2020.
I'll move that we approve.
My second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 7, consideration and possible action to make appointment to the position of Logan County Assessor to fill the term ending 31 December 2022 vacated by Tisha Hampton. Gentlemen, we have, that I know of, two applicants for this position. One is Judy Ferris-Damlin. And the other here is Wayne Murphy. They both have experience in the office. I know you guys have had time to probably read all of these and have an opinion on that and entertain the motion or discussion.
Yeah, well, I think I'll go ahead and move on later. I think Wayne's probably got the most experience. I think he's probably been running it for the last couple of years. And I'll make that motion. We appoint Wayne Murphy.
I have a motion down here, second.
Get a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Wayne Murphy. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Wayne.
Thank you.
We will get together after the meeting.
Wayne, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your...
I think the other lady was probably qualified. I just feel Wayne is more qualified.
He has been doing the job for the last several years.
He's been in, working with him, so I think it's a right decision.
Okay. Moving on, Item 8, consideration and possible action concerning the City of Guthrie's request to contract with Logan County Emergency Service Office to provide emergency management service to the City of Guthrie. This, we're going into our seventh month without a contract with the City on this. And I, you know, I'm of the belief that if they wanted a contract, we'd have one by now. If they wanted to talk to us about it, they would be doing that. I know the Sheriff's been in the process of trying to negotiate with them. I wrote up a new contract for emergency services a little over a year ago. And it hasn't gone anywhere. I'm of the opinion that we should no longer consider that Logan County's providing those services to the City. I think we should help them with the transition and allow the City to appoint and train up their own city emergency manager. There's a couple of reasons for that. The biggest one is that I've seen that we've had a little bit of an issue with our emergency manager trying to serve two masters, if you will. One at the county level and one at the city level. And the City wants to reimburse the county somewhere around a fourth of an FTE for the use of our emergency manager and providing that service to them. By statute, they're required to have an emergency manager at the City. All of our municipalities do. We're the only one. Right now, Logan County is only providing that service to one other municipality and that's City of Guthrie. The challenge that I have is that he want to reimburse us for a quarter of an FTE, but direct us activities about half to three quarters of the time. And I think that that becomes problematic when we're trying to enhance our emergency management capabilities at the county and maybe take on a little more responsibility as is outlined in the statutes. And so, I'm of the opinion that we should just allow the City to do what they want to do. They're not very forthcoming in working with us in other areas of emergency management. That one-fourth reimbursement certainly doesn't enter into their equations when we're talking about 911 funding, overfunding that the City gets from ACOG, the over-collected fees for 911 services in our unincorporated areas goes to the City. And they don't want to share any of that with us to help with our Sheriff's 911 system. And they refuse to do that right now. So, I think it's time that we let the City of Guthrie do their own emergency management service. Again, not to cut them off, not to leave them in the lurch, but to help them transition over.
Did we not give them a... Did we not sign a contract to give them to approve that their Board...
We did not sign any contract.
I was thinking that we did. Damon, do you know...
No, I know I'm talking to Troy. She said that they had personnel that typically would submit the contract to us, and we haven't received that. So, was that a motion, Monty?
The Board agreed to a dollar amount that was sent back to the City to do their contract that I've never seen you pay for.
Yes, that's a motion.
Well, without a contract in conversation, my second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion on this topic?
I guess we are going to help them.
Yes. Yeah. I don't think that we need to jerk the rug out from under them or anything like that. It's, you know, there's a transition. I think there's radio systems that we'll need to re... Not reimburse, but give back to them. There's things that we'll have to pick up our end of that they've been using as reimbursement of services, so...
Do you have any idea what happened? They have not signed, filled out a contract, sent back.
Don't have a clue.
Damon, you got any idea? Well, it sounds like they kind of made the decision then.
Well, the last two quarters, we haven't been able to bill them for services because we haven't had a contract. So, let's see. Had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8. Consideration and possible action to approve a request to the State Auditor and Inspector to conduct an investigative audit of Logan County Commission District Number 2 of possible fraud, waste, and abuse concerning previous financial management, including district residents, requiring district residents to pay for road maintenance, mismanagement of lease purchase contracts, and unauthorized and undocumented cash funds. I was asking, put this on there. There's several concerned citizens in District 2 that would like to see some answers to some of their allegations. And this is the only way I can think of to get the answers for them.
I get it. My question is, this undocumented cash funds. I mean, I didn't know we had such a thing.
Well, I didn't know we had either. But apparently, there is such a thing over there. There's a coffee can that has cash in it where the employees contributed to kind of a coffee candy lunch fund.
Pretty much a snack bar is what they're...
So, is that illegal for employees to donate money to buy coffee?
It's maybe not illegal, but if there's no records being kept on where the money goes, how to use, that sort of stuff, that could be problematic, I think.
And they've got prices for, that are posted for the products, so they're actually charging for the products instead of just donations.
They, who's they?
I mean, that's one of the things that an investigation will have to figure out.
And so, another way, I mean, I would like for it also to be done just to kind of cover everything and then kind of ease some of the citizens' minds. I mean, I've had a lot of people approach me about asking, doing a full audit after I take office. Even though we did just do a transitional or turnover audit, they would like to do a full audit because the turnover audit mostly covers your inventory.
Do you have an estimated cost on this? Okay. So, I'll entertain the motion.
My second.
I said I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do your second. I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye, nay, I oppose. And the reason being, I just don't think guys putting money in a coffee can to buy coffee to have something to drink is too fraudulent. I mean, that's my opinion.
I agree. But that's one of the minor things that we're going to be looking into, having them looking into over there. It's getting there. Motion passes 2 to 1. Item 10, consideration and possible action concerning Logan County Courthouse Complex, internet connection consolidation among the various offices at the courthouse complex. We've got this new phone system coming in. Hopefully, one of these days, they're supposed to be on the way. Troy, is that within the next month or so?
I don't know. I don't have an answer, Martin. It's kind of fallen with, all that had... It's been shifted. I'll see what I can get figured out.
Okay. Go ahead, Monty.
I mean, I think we need it consolidated. I can't believe we can't share Wi-Fi between the two offices.
Oh, I agree. And to be honest with you, I've had a talk with Wayne about, you know, shared internet service and expanding our capabilities between the annex and the courthouse. I mean, there's a way to put up a wireless connection that will allow us a greater throughput, a bigger pipe. You know about pipes. A bigger pipe. That will also help the assessor's office because they also use cloud computing and the ability to connect to those databases in real time instead of batch updating. Is that what you were talking about, Wayne?
Actually, we do it live, but it would be very, you know, advantageous for us to have a pastor system.
Right. And then, you know, Monty, like we've done, I've done in previous life when I used to work at data centers, we would have two internet connections from different internet service providers providing connections to the primary. And that's in case somebody's backhoe cuts a cable. I know that never happens in our world, right? Or Rugger, AT&amp;T, Fox, you know, that sort of stuff. So, that would allow dual redundancy. And with the phone system that we've got coming in, that would be something that... We really can't afford to lose the phone system, right? So, that's part of the service level agreement that we probably want to have is to do something like that. So, I put this on here to talk about this and to take action as we implement the new phone system to go ahead and do that internet connection that way and implement a wireless connection between the main courthouse and the annex over here. That's a high-speed wireless shot that wireless service providers put on residential houses and things like that. But it's a real high-speed connection that we'd be able to share over here. And I think Wayne's agreeable to doing that. Well, there's ways to firewall off our systems from guest access and that sort of stuff. And I think that we'd be able to do that pretty easily.
I'll move with approval.
My second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 11.
Chairman, can we move that to the end of the agenda, maybe?
Yeah, sure. Sure thing. Damon, your...
Wes Damon's got something he needs to do.
I'm here, it's your pleasure, sir.
Does he have them up there?
There we go. Thank you.
I'll send a check on Facebook.
Item 12, consideration and possible action on appointing... On resolution, appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
Just one for District 2.
I'll move with approval.
My second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 13, consideration and possible action on resolution, appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
Just one for District 2.
I'll make a motion, I approve.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your official order. Item 14, consideration and possible action on consent agenda.
We have no transfers within the count. I do have transfers from last fiscal year to this fiscal year.
Not calendar year, fiscal year. Cody, this is that part I warned you about.
Lights back today.
Yeah. Yeah. She didn't bring a wheelbarrow with her.
Yeah, I did. Did y'all want to take it easy on me as well?
I'm not sure you've been here, had anything to do with that.
I didn't want to sign that one.
Oh.
Spring Ridge has a whole $533.97 in every road district. What up?
Well, that's because we're just collecting taxes, so... I think overall, in 12 years, it has, that'll bring it to $7,200.
Sure, sure you see.
Not quite a blow to rock yet.
Neighborhoods that have houses that assess for higher value build up money quicker. The older neighborhoods, it's a...
Uphill down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they get like $30 a month or something a year.
It depends on the valuation, on the four rural road districts. You might want to separate that these are four special assessment districts. Not normal.
Wayne, you can take care of that, can't you?
Yeah. (laughing). I don't think they want you to take care of it. The way that Wayne can take care of it, yeah. I will make you evaluate your property at a million dollars instead of $10,000.
Assessor report.
Evergreen got $43.
How many of them did you hand? Just three of them, District 4? Been trying to calm down on that.
I... Well, and here's the thing, they're not well statewide in that. I get phone calls from, what is this, when they see it on our records? Because they're not a used part of the law.
Could it's something that only we are doing?
Actually, Frank Davis is the one that... My understanding is he's the one that wrote the law to get those established. In theory, that sounds like a great idea. The problem is, when you're dealing with no parameters of how they really should work. So, with Spring Ridge, we're talking, I think it's actually technically less than a mile of road. With valuations that are very little, they cannot generate enough revenue that it's actually going to help them. But yet, the cost of the assessment and paperwork and the monitoring, here we are. And they're never going to see any value for their three mils. The other three, being in a larger subdivisions, it took them quite a while to gather up enough money, but they did eventually gather up, you know, put together enough to actually do a resurface. But the law does not have any limitations or minimums, which is what I contend it needs. It needs to be a minimum valuation to create a district. Otherwise, it's, you're chasing your tail. You're never going to get... And the county, the assessor, the treasurer, and the clerk, we do all this paperwork, and they're never going to get anything of benefit for it.
So, there needs to be a business plan established for it, right? So, if they've got an asphalt road, the life of an asphalt road is somewhere around a dozen years. If they don't collect enough money to re-aspot that road in a dozen years, then that's not a good business plan. I think is what I hear you saying.
Well, essentially, but, you know, the law wasn't written for anything other than the special assessment district to be formed. And then, there's stages. They could do a bond issue, but basically, they get six mils, I believe it is. I have to double check. Three mils and three mils, that's it. But if you are talking to an area that has a very low property valuation, that millage does not collect many dollars.
That's kind of what I was talking about, the business plan. Yeah, if it's not viable to do what it's intended, then...
So, the Spring Ridge has been collecting taxes for about 10 years, I believe, and has less than $10,000 total collection in 10 years.
Is that all the consent agenda we have here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move with approval.
My second.
I have a motion and a second on consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So, we're at Item 15 here with the consent of the Board. We'll jump back to Item 11. Consideration and possible action to conduct annual inspection of Logan County Detention Center. Meeting will continue in the Commissioners Conference Room after the inspection. I guess. Not sure where we've left. I think we just moved it across the street. In any event, we did conduct the annual inspection of the jail, Monty.
Yeah, I mean, everything looks good in the jail. I think the Sheriff's done a good job. They're dealing with the COVID-19 and 14 when they have to. But as far as the structure goes, everything looks good.
I agree.
I'd like to also add on the COVID-19 that most of the people that tested positive, they're asymptomatic, they don't have... They don't show symptoms, but they still have to be isolated and treated and such, so...
They're doing a good job doing, following the rules and trying to do what they can to keep them separated. It's a tough job. So, do we need a motion on that, or...
It wasn't structured as such since conducting the annual inspection.
I'm sorry, I probably used the wrong terminology here. I'm learning that. It's never been opened, to the best of my knowledge. It's going into some land that's sort of in the middle of the section, and it's never been open to, I suppose we'd have to double check the record on that.
Do you know the legal description? The section runs between what, one?
Between, I know the roads it runs between. I'm sure you're on Google Earth and stuff, yes.
What road are they in between?
Well, it would be a continuation of Camp Road between, I may have to look it up on the map. If I could see a map, I could show you. I don't know if it exists.
There's one up there. There's a couple of them up there.
Okay.
This one behind this young lady right here.
We, I think it's over here. It's all the same name. I need to see, I'm sorry, can I look there maybe just a little bit clearer? 15. Okay. It's right here, yeah. Matter of fact, that's a piece of property right there. It would be between, I guess that's Triple X.
Can you get the legal off of that?
And Peabody.
What section is it?
It's 16 and.
16 north?
Yeah.
One east.
One east?
Yeah.
Who's going to be between which sections? Those two little boxes should have numbers.
Yeah, 32. It's actually in section, I guess, five.
32 five.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the road, yeah. You got a dotted line here. It was, be a continuation of Camp Road. I believe this has been opened up as just a dirt, it's not pavement. I'm not sure. I could show you on Google Earth, but it's, I don't know if that's opened up. I'm not sure what dotted line means here.
I think probably just need to get with Cody and Anthony.
Yeah. So, sir, you know, as we discussed, without this being on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
We can certainly put it on the agenda for the 15th if we need to. But after our meeting, if you get with your new county commissioner.
Okay.
This is our county clerk, Troy Cull. She also, she maintains all the blocks and flats and all that stuff, and also, she's our archivist.
Okay.
If that road had ever been.
She's the one that knows everything.
Yes, sir. If that road had ever been opened in the past, we would be able to probably search that. We're going to need to get a pretty good legal description on it first, and then, and that's what you guys could do after this. I'm sure Cody would be happy to work with you on whatever it would take to get you into your property that you're looking at buying. And I understand that's what, you're landlocked right now and need access to the property. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it for now.
All right. Appreciate you coming in, Dale. Item 16. Any comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners?
Only thing I got is welcome Cody to the board and good luck, and see what future brings us.
Good. Glad to be here. I look forward to it and look forward to getting guidance from everybody here, being new to me, and hopefully have a successful turn.
I wish you all the luck.
Only thing I've got is to echo Monty's sentiments, congratulations and welcome to the board. We appreciate the help and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item 17. Consideration of possible action on adjournment.
I'll move, we adjourn.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.